Okay, this May 2, 2018 meeting of the Oyster Cooperative School Board will come to order. Before we get started, I just, as a personal point, I want to, although Dean Ryan is not here, I want to apologize to him because I interrupted him, his public comment at the last meeting, and his comment was perfectly appropriate. I shouldn't have done it. And you certainly have welcomed his comments in the past, and I hope that I can create an environment where everybody feels free to speak their piece in public comments. So, we hope to hear his comments again in the future. So, the first order of business is a public hearing, essentially to accept money from the state for reconstruction of the entryway and some offices at the front of Masteway School. So Denise is going to make a motion.
Yep.
And then we'll move into a public hearing.
So I make a motion to enter into a public hearing on the acceptance of unanticipated funds from the Public School Infrastructure Fund.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. So this is a chance for anybody to ask questions. This is essentially an action we have to take to accept the money that's, you know, from the state that would allow us to reconstruct the entrance way. So are there questions? Comments? Hearing none?
[inaudible]
Hearing none. It's a real controversial decision. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
It's moved.
Moved by Al. Is there a second? Second by Brian. All those in favor? Okay, motion, the public hearing is closed. So Denise is down, so now we're going to enter. Denise is going to make a motion to accept this, I think it's to accept this money.
Well, this is the resolution authorizing the district to enter into a performance contract agreement and master lease purchase agreement. And so I need to read this statement. Therefore, be it resolved by the governing body that the energy savings contract, the lease, as incorporating the terms and conditions of the agreement and the escrow agreement are hereby approved, and lessees business administrator, superintendent, or other representative of the leese designated by any of them in writing is hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary to consummate the energy savings contract and financing, including but not limited to executing the energy savings contract, the lease as incorporating the terms and conditions of the agreement, and the escrow agreement, all substantially in the forms attached heretofore with such changes or amendments, substantial or otherwise, as are approved by the representative of leese executing those documents. Such approval to be conclusively evidenced by that representative's execution of those documents, and all other documents, instruments, certificates, and agreements related to the energy savings contract, the escrow agreement, and the lease, that was one. Two, all actions previously taken by district with respect to the subject matter of this resolution are hereby ratified and confirmed. Yeah, and that's it. And so, yeah, all of that.
So we just need a motion to accept the resolution.
So is the motion to approve that?
But that's not related to the public hearing, right?
No.
This is a separate.
Public hearing is done. Now we need to get this resolution done.
Yep, this is a resolution. For this is-
You need the public-
So to adopt the resolution?
Yeah.
This is the lease agreement.
The public hearing had nothing to do with this.
Right.
Correct.
Completely separate.
Separate. So we need a motion to adopt the resolution. Denise made the motion. We need a second. Thank you.
Second by Brian.
Second.
All right. Discussion?
So just before you vote, the resolution really is an affirmation of previous votes by the school board related to the grant the state is giving us to do the front entry.
Okay.
Ready?
This is not related to the grant. This is related to the Siemens lease, isn't it?
Siemens, exactly.
Correct.
So it has nothing to do with the grant?
You're right, Michael.
Or the hearing?
I'm just adding to the confusion. Yes, it has to do with the votes the board has taken on the Siemens work prior. Yes.
I'm confused.
I know, because I just added to the confusion. Ken.
So really what you're doing is you're giving me the approval, or Dr. Morris, the approval, to sign all of the closing paperwork. So they have to have an official approval resolution from you to give me that approval to sign all those documents.
So this is actually related to the lease schedule that we looked at at the previous meeting?
The Siemens lease schedule, yes.
But shouldn't we, as a board, approve receiving the funds? That was the point of the public hearing.
Again, Michael is absolutely correct. These are two completely separate issues. The public hearing wasn't about the Siemens lease. This is about the Siemens lease. So I wanted to get the resolution done tonight so we didn't lose track of it.
Okay, I'm with Kenny. Related to the subject of the hearing, when do we vote to accept the grant funds? Or is that-
You've done that. The grant funds, you accepted that a number of months ago when we presented it. But the state said we also needed to go through the resolution process.
Public hearing.
Public hearing process.
Public hearing.
I should have put these back in the back.
Whenever you receive excess funds, you need to have a hearing to allow the public to comment on it. Because it's going to be over and above the budget that was voted on when you voted in March.
Go ahead.
I think we should approve hearing from the public to make it official. After a public hearing, I think then you go ahead and you approve. When we approved it, it was not official because we didn't follow policy. We didn't have a public hearing before approving it. So we're doing this all pro forma, so we should approve it, but-
Why don't we finish this one and make a motion to approve it?
Perfect.
So we have a motion to approve the resolution. We have a second. Everybody to vote on that? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. That motion is passed.
All right.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ken.
So, and I think we should move to approve what Denise-
No, what the public hearing.
What the public hearing, what we entered into public hearing for.
Which is the acceptance of the grant.
Of the grant money.
So I make a motion that we officially accept the grant funds from the state.
Moved by Al. Second by Michael. Okay. Questions on that?
I did.
Michael, okay. Second. So we all set? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. The student rep in favor. Okay.
All right.
Now we can get-
Don't forget to sign.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Sorry for the confusion. I added to it.
Okay. I just want to remind you I have to sign this. Or something?
Yep.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. There's one change to the agenda, which is there's the report on the progress of the ELO will be postponed to a subsequent meeting. So with that change, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Brian?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Brian. Is there a second? Second by Denise. All in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. Student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Have public comment?
I heard the apology on, through the magic of technology, and it's accepted. I kind of enjoyed the interruption. Got my 60s protest spirit. I'm only here to say that I got a call on a borrowed cellphone from my son, who doesn't have one. He's in the middle school. They are stuck in Massachusetts on a bus, as I'm sure we'll hear about. And I will be going to pick him up at the middle school shortly because I think there's some sort of arrangement for him to get home before the bus gets fixed. But magic of technology, and it is possible for middle school students to borrow phones. That's all.
Am I supposed to say my name and my town?
Yes, please.
Okay. Janet Perkins-Holland from Durham. I am, wanted to come up here to encourage, or more maybe of a plea for the leadership team and the school board to put mental health and wellness at the very top of the list of priorities for the district. I don't think it's really, any doubt that anxiety and depression rates are the highest that we've seen. Suicide prevention is obviously at the top of everyone's mind. But I also think we need to examine how these conditions are linked with things like other very important topics like cellphone use, technology use, homework, gun safety. If people don't feel safe, they can't perform as teachers and students. And as a district, I'd love for us to examine what makes us feel unsafe in the learning environment. What are some of the common denominators for these conditions? Of course, preventative measures. Basically, what's really going on? Before we can solve any of these issues, and as we think about how we want to allocate our time and our resources, I'd like to ask first to think about mental health and well-being first. Thanks.
Thank you, Janet. Are there public comment?
Sarah Farwell-Lee. I wanted to thank you all for taking a look at the cellphone policy and the technology stuff. I looked at the new draft and was pleased for my own kids. Because for my kids, it takes out the inequity that is happening, and is starting to happen more and more, because their parents don't allow them to have cellphone, or they're, my middle schooler is not allowed to have a cellphone at school. And so it's taking out that inequity piece that I'm hearing is happening more and more. Again, my eighth, my current ninth grader, he said, we had a couple projects the end of his eighth grade year. As I was digging into all this and sort of asking my kids more and more, I'm hearing it's every couple weeks she doesn't get to take part in activity because she doesn't have a cellphone. And that's unfortunate. And, but anyway, so thank you. I do want to take a look at the, or comment on a few things in the PowerPoint that you're going to be talking about later, about the outcomes of the one-to-one. I understand that we need more technology at the middle school to close that loophole, to make it so that we don't have kids using their personal devices. But I would really push the board to question whether we absolutely have to go to one-to-one. I say that because as I look through this list of outcomes, it says, many of you have heard me preach about this before, increased in student-centered individualized and project-based learning. My experience is in math education, and I would say I am quite concerned with technology being seen as the silver bullet to individualized mathematic education, and especially at the elementary level, but also at the middle school level. And we don't just want our kids to have an individualized education. We want them to have a quality, good education. And that quality, good education, I look at this, improvement in technology and problem-solving skills. If we're plugging them into a program where they're not being asked to discuss and think and look at patterns and make observations, is that what we want for our kids? And I've been super fortunate that my kids have had teachers who are not strong believers in programs like that and are pushing them to think and be creative and use those 21st century skills that we're all talking about. I would argue that sometimes those skills are not taught using technology. They're taught using people. So I would really urge you to think about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Hello, my name is Liz Phillips. I'm from Durham. I just want to thank you for drafting a policy to support cellphone restrictions in the middle school. It's my hope that this draft will be implemented quickly. It is my understanding that the middle school has 300 computers or tablets. Let's please consider if these are enough for our students. We want to teach students to understand technology use in a guided, safe way so that all students have access. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there public comment? No. Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the April 18 regular meeting minutes? Brian?
Motion approved.
Moved by Brian. Is there a second? Second by Al. I have one change that I'd like to request. It's on page seven, and it's near the bottom, the last paragraph. It says, "Michael, Kenny, and Brian are in favor of removing this exemption. Tom, Denise, and Al agree that the exemption should be there." We did have a discussion on that, but this almost sounds like there was a vote, and we've taken a position, and this is still an open discussion. I would like to see that, that removed.
Do you want to amend it or-
I would like to see that sentence removed. Let's see, well, because I think the rest of it talks about just the discussion, and this almost talks like people have taken a position, and this is still an open question, in my view. I mean, we, nobody's taken a final decision on it. Are there other changes? Denise?
Yes, but I'm just, I'm not there yet. Oh, here we go. Okay. On page three, under my comment, it says Denise Day attended the social meeting awareness. It should be social media awareness, so just to correct that wording. And then on page four, it's another, just wording. Under Todd's com, report, under Todd's report, when he talks about the educational exception that is currently in the cellphone draft as a transitional phase as they move to one-to-one module, I'm thinking we're talking one-to-one device?
Or one-to-one model.
Oh, model, okay. Because I knew module wasn't really the right word, so model would be fine. And then the last one is on page seven, and it actually, when Michael is talking about the policy, let me see if I can find it. Yeah, I just, and I wanted to check with you, Michael. It's, Michael Williams asked about the current policy and believes that items three, four, five should be in the new proposed procedure, but I think you were still saying they should be in the policy?
No, it's procedure.
It was the procedure? Okay.
Those are right in the procedure.
All right, all right. So then that's it.
Other changes? Okay, with those changes, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. The student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. Announcements, comments, and commendations from the district?
Jay Richard, the principal of the middle school. Just a bus update. What happened is we had a group of seventh graders headed down to Fenway Park today to watch the Red Sox and participate in the STEM Day, and one of the buses broke down on the way back. It wasn't actually a district bus. We had to use outside transportation. I've been in contact with the teachers. First student is sending another bus to pick up the students, and like Dean mentioned, majority of parents have been notified. So that's kind of what's going on with that, just so you know. Red Sox did win, though.
Well, that's an important thing.
Jay, Jay, how was Washington?
Oh, it was a wonderful trip. The weather was beautiful, just seamless. You know, the kids were great. And one of the positive things about Washington is we always get so many compliments from other people around how well-behaved and respectful our kids are around the monuments. So it's just, it's a special trip. Thanks for asking.
Thank you for doing it.
Good evening. David Goldsmith, the principal of Mohermit Elementary School. At Mohermit specifically, we've been doing a lot to continue our study for our Year of theme. This year it's been the Year of the Forest. We have another assembly happening this month where we're learning about forestry and tree service work and how that helps in our forests in the state. And we're getting ready for our annual Day of celebration. This year will be the Day of the Forest, which we're using, doing at UNH. And I just need to publicly thank all of the people at UNH who are supporting us so much through extension, forestry, and a lot of the other departments of UNH who have been very supportive in helping create this day. And then at both elementary schools, we've just begun our state assessment this week, formerly known as Smarter Balance. It's now called SAS, State Assessment Systems. Fourth grade has been testing this week. It's going very well, both elementary schools. We'll have third grade tests next week, and we should be done after makeups by the middle of May. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Carrie Vash from Mastway. We have a few-
What? What did you say? What did you say?
Jim.
Oh, come on. Try it again.
Carrie Vash Roy, maybe?
To get used to it.
It's really not necessary. Back to what I was going to say. Thank you very much. My face is so hot. All right. So we came back, had a great vacation, by the way. We came back for a few other great acknowledgements. First, we have Lori Buckley, our kitchen manager, who was named New Hampshire Kitchen Manager of the Year from the School Nutrition Association of New Hampshire. So we're quite pleased with her award. Secondly, we have in the back Felicia Sperry, our fantastic school psychologist, who is also recognized by the New Hampshire Association of School Psychologists, named as the New Hampshire Association, New Hampshire School Psychologist of the Year.
Wow.
So. In addition, you probably know, we do have some construction already started at Mastway. We were very busy over vacation. I will tell you, on the side of the building, a new access road has been put into place. There were a few trees that were taken down in order to do that. Nice gravel driveway so that we have access without having to go through the playground, which is great for safety. Fencing was put up just the other day. Very nice sturdy fencing. I was pleased to see that. A construction trailer was delivered on Tuesday morning. Today, we actually had folks out there digging up the blacktop where the new classrooms will be placed. So that was great. Because of the safety wall between our property and the town property, and our, where they'll be working, and the playground area, we now are not able to use one of our accesses. So again, I have to thank Scott Nesment, our police, or fire chief, excuse me, for coming over right away. I just love running things by him. And I said, can you just come and just double-check my thoughts with rerouting for escape routes? And he came right over. He was great. We walked the building, and I said, you know, if we do this, how about this? So he gave me his feedback. And we've got that all set up. We informed staff, and they will in turn inform kids so that we're safe here in the building during all these projects. But I have to say that kindergarteners were enjoying watching those trucks today. It was the first, they were hanging on, like, back up a little bit, please, just a little bit. But it's been exciting. So it is starting, and we're ready to roll. So, thank you all.
Others? Okay. Thank you. Board announcements, commendations, comments? Denise?
I just want to commend Sean Kelly, who is the faculty advisor for The Mouth of the River, and all the students who are, who write on The Mouth of the River, or for The Mouth of the River. The articles in every edition, it's always amazing. It's just such a professional level, I think, and great source of information about what's going on in the schools. So that's all.
Real journalism.
Real journalism, yes. Very much so.
Others? Okay. Is there an assistant superintendent report? No? Superintendent's report?
I will be relatively quick. I also want to commend Felicia. She didn't stand, so we should have her stand one more time. And then, very quickly, what I wanted to revisit, if the board was okay with it, was we had a discussion a couple of board meetings ago about adding a world language program. Just to recap that discussion, our kindergarten enrollment is much lower than we anticipated. We were carrying an elementary teacher for an additional kindergarten position. I'd like to reassign that, that cost to the middle school so that we can add a world language position at the middle school because our class sizes are beyond our, your policy. The principal, Jay Richard, was doing interviews for his open position. Last year, when we interviewed for world language, we struggled to have candidates that were of a quality we like to hire here in the district. When Jay did his interviews this week, he had several extraordinary candidates. So we never closed the loop on whether the board was supportive of shifting those funds to the middle school so we could hire the additional world language teacher. And I was hoping the board would be willing to do that tonight.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to hire an additional world language teacher for the middle school.
Moved by Denise. A second by Brian?
And then?
Speak, yeah.
Just a question. Where are we in terms of the enrollment for kindergarten, since the last time you reported?
Has not moved off, off the 45 and 40. And if it does, we still are carrying a unfilled position. So we do have latitude in the elementary account if we need to go to it. Meeting next week with Carrie and David to review the numbers, because all of the numbers and all the grades are right at the board policy upper limit. And so we haven't cut off options by moving the funds forward to the middle school to hire the fourth world language teacher.
Can I ask one question?
You may have a big, big answer because you're just interviewing. But are you looking to have the new teacher hire teach Jack? Because I know we had, the last time, we had a teacher that covered French and Spanish, right? And so are you looking to try to get a teacher who can do just French or Spanish?
Ideally, we're always looking for dual certifications in all, you know, all of our teaching positions. So when I hire, you know, a fifth grade teacher, we like them to have additional certification, potentially in something else. That's something I always like to look at. Right now, like Dr. Morris said, we interviewed eight candidates last Wednesday over break. I was extremely enthused in terms of the level of candidates. Starting tomorrow, I have four, no, I'll have five people coming in to teach model lessons this week and next week to kind of make some, you know, further decisions in terms of where we might want to go. Right now, at the very least, we're going to hire one Spanish person, and then the potential, if we can get the right person that can do both, that would be ideal. But there's also the potential, if we can't do that, and I don't find the kind of fit I want for our students, then we might need to do like a 50-50, meaning a halftime Spanish and a halftime French. And one of the challenges too, Al, is, you know, where we're not really sure. We give the kids choice. So depending on what the sixth graders select, between French, Spanish, and Chinese, that also, you know, comes into play as well. But I feel very confident with an additional position, whether it's one person or two halftime positions, our numbers will be great. So.
And the intent here is to reduce the sizes in sixths of an eighth?
Correct.
Exactly, yep.
Not extend to fit.
Yep.
And it would seem to me that if you hired two at the same time, you can kind of figure out how they kind of complement each other in terms of, you know, covering things.
Yep, definitely. French is more of a challenge to find teachers that are willing to do that. But again, strategically, with the candidates I have, we have a couple candidates who do have a French background. What my expectation will be, that they would, you know, participate in a lot of professional development in terms of strengthening that. And I have a lot of, you know, ideas how we need to become a little bit more aggressive with that.
Okay. So I think we have a motion, we have a second, right?
Yep.
Okay. Further questions about this?
So can we just clarify that we are reallocating the additional kindergarten position to be a middle school world language?
Correct.
That's not in the motion. Do you want to-
I move to amend the motion to clarify.
That's fine.
Accept that as a friendly?
Yeah, friendly amendment, that's fine.
Okay. Ready vote? All in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. The student rep in favor. Okay, the position is approved.
And then just the one last thing. You know, we made a commitment several months ago to at least producing eight articles a month about what's happening in the district. And I made a commitment to get that list to you monthly. So rather than, and this will be something you guys can discuss of whether it works for you, producing all that paper, I've given you a summative list of the articles, and those will be available to you online. If you missed them in the newspapers, tomorrow, they'll be accessible to you via Wendy. She'll make sure they're there. And then Wendy is going to put them on the master webpage of the district. So there's 16 articles there. All of them should be on our webpage tomorrow. And you'll have access to those tomorrow. So if you're okay with not getting paper copies, that saves us a lot of trees.
That's very sustainable. I like that.
And certainly very noticeable, the difference, the increase in-
Yeah, the principals and the directors have been amazing in putting out timely articles. Still, what you don't see is there's several already approved, ready to go. So we- Um, so we've been very good at, at, um, keeping, um, the press releases going.
Good.
And that is the end of my report tonight.
Is there a?
Oh, just in terms of the strategic plan, um, we did get the RUFF data back from Nezdeck and I'm meeting with Nezdeck along with Catherine and Todd and Sue Friday. And we're going to ask them to take that ref, rough data and turn it into a, uh, a summative document. Uh, we went through it and, um, our heads were spinning by the time we got to the end of it. And we want them to do something a little bit more concise so it's shareable with, with all of you in the community.
Great. Um, business admin, uh, business administrator?
Good evening. I give you another update on our budget. We're down to the last two months of the year. Um, the one point five million dollar balance doesn't necessarily mean that's where I expect our fund balance to be, but based on some of the balances, it's, it's looking pretty good that we'll be able to put some money into the emergency fund and still have the money that we anticipated for offsetting the tax rate, so.
Great.
Questions?
Well, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Student center report?
Yes. Um, rehearsals for the musical Grease are in full swing. Um, and the show will be on Memorial D weekend, the weekend of the twenty-sixth. Um, on Wednesday, May ninth, a group of freshmen are participating in a race and bias workshop. And bystander training ends next week. It's a short one this week because we had an awesome vacation.
Are you in Greece?
I am.
Who are you?
I'm just ensemble.
Okay, ready for the, uh, report on social emotional learning?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Felicia Sperry, school psychologist at Mastway. Um, and I guess we'll now, um, quick introductions while we're doing it now.
Hi, Michelle Fitz Henry. I teach fourth grade at Moheramit.
I'm Tricia Hall. I teach third grade at Moheramit.
I'm Karina Delchino, the school counselor at Moheramit.
I'm going to come to this presentation together. Um, the ones, you guys have all received the PowerPoints, have hopefully had a chance to take a look at things. We're not going to read everything off the slides, but kind of give you the snapshot version of it. Um, the one slide we did not include, which we should have done, was all the people that were part of the committee, um, because we wanted to give you an idea of, um, who participated. Um, and we had, um, everyone from administrators to teachers, specialists, special ed. Um, we really wanted to kind of include, um, everyone to have a voice in this project. So Catherine Plourd was part, Dennis Harrington, uh, David and Carrie have been part of it as well. Um, we have from Mastway, Barb Biquette, Deb Hastings, Brenda Terrell, Chris, Kirsten DeRocher, Maria Bowden Gerard, Kate Samar, who actually was at Moheramit and Mastway, um, Jackie Phillion from Moheramit, Karina Delchino, Trish Hall, Michelle Fitz Henry, Ryan Long, Brittany Morley. And we also had at times, um, members of the middle school on fifth grade, uh, Sunny Sedana, Alex Graut, Poleroy, um, had come to different meetings to discuss different pieces. So we really, um, were pretty inclusive, um, with the information and participation throughout, uh, the, especially the two schools. Um, and we did a lot of work. So my job, uh, is to kind of introduce and give an overview and then we're going to talk about what the committee did and, um, our, um, suggest our goals going forward. So, um, this was our, the long-term goal and our short-term goal. And if you notice that date, at the end of the fall, two thousand and fifteen, that's actually when the committee started. Um, so we asked, we have been working for three years, um, on this project and it has been a collaborative effort between Mastway and Moheramit. Um, when we came together, the first big, um, piece of the project was to really define what social emotional learning is because if we stand, have ten people stand up and say, what is it, then we're going to hear different versions of what it is. So it was really important for the committee to, um, have a consensus. And majority of our work, um, information we got was from CASL, which is an organization that really is setting the standard for social emotional learning. Um, they are literally setting the standards that's everyone is adopting, um, both schools and districts, um, throughout the country. So here's the definition of which we function at. Social emotional learning is the process through which children and adults acquire, effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible, responsible decisions. And those skills, I think, really address what Janet spoke about earlier, about what she'd like to see happen. This is where it has to happen, uh, in order for us to, uh, uh, address those concerns. There's a lot of myths about SEL, which we kind of discussed and debunked. A lot of people believe you either have it or you don't. It's meant for little kids. It's not, there's not a place for it in the academic schools, um, and all those, um, and it only takes place during advisory. But, um, we've really shown that it, and the research shows over and over that, uh, it, that's not, none of those are true. We can use it through freestanding lessons, teaching and practicing cooperative learning projects, integrating it into the curriculum, um, and also having direct instruction in those areas. The research really shows that the most effective programs, um, are sequenced and connected. Um, they're active, the kids are actively participating in that, they're focused, and there's that explicit teaching piece. And that's really a key that will, you'll hear through all of our comments. This is a very common, uh, model. Right here, you see what it breaks down to the five domains that are covered. Uh, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. And this is part, should be part of curriculum, um, and instruction, uh, practice in the classroom, school-wide, and then also in the community and homes. Uh, this is just a breakdown. When you look at the five domains, the different skills that can be included in, that's not a, a finite list, but those are the targeted skills, um, for each of the different domains. This is a key piece here. So when we're looking at, um, different SEL approaches, um, we're looking at explicit skill instruction, we're looking at integrating it into the academic curriculum, and then we're also looking at teaching instructional practices. From that, what the research shows is that there's a SEL skill acquisition in those five competency areas. There's improved attitudes about self, others, and schools. And then the outcomes are what we're hoping for, that positive social behavior, the fewer conduct problems, less emotional distress, and academic success. Um, and it's not that we're just hoping for it, but the research shows over and over that this is what happens when there's a coordinated, um, social emotional learning program in place. Uh, just repeat. Um, and final part for me is that, um, when we're looking at this, uh, what the approach is or what we wanted to adopt or take a look at, really, we sat down and talked as a committee, it, really, the why is what's really important. And the thing that was really consistent across schools and across, um, staff was the why we want to do this. And there's two main pieces. One is really for that skill acquisition. We're seeing kids that are lacking skills in those social emotional learning domains. And while there used to be a belief that it was something you picked up through osmosis, you learned through your life, really that not all the kids do. And that we really need to be better at doing that direct instruction, teaching those skills, which are, it's all very, um, possible to happen. And the other piece is giving children a voice. When you focus on the social emotional learning, it's not just about the skill acquisition, but it's also teaching kids to talk about what's going on for them. And then having a voice and us being able to respond to that and how to connect those skills and their concerns and kind of resolve things. Um, and creating that community that embraces that and, uh, works with that. Okay? So I'm going to pass it off about the committee work. Michelle?
Okay. All right. So as Felicia said, we've been working for three years. And I'm not going to read everything, everything here, just give you some highlights on some of the work the committee's done. It all started in two thousand and fifteen with a summer proposal that Felicia drafted. And after that, the board created, um, S, an SEL goal. And then a committee was created with both Moheramit and Mastway staff. And we sent out, we sent out a survey to the entire district. I'm sure some people sitting here remember taking that survey. And we spent a lot of time looking at the results of that survey and it really highlighted the importance of SEL teaching across the board. Um, we had, the committee got together, we looked at, at all the information, looked at the survey results. We, um, Mike Anderson came and spoke with us informally. And then later on, we did a workshop with him to try and figure out where we were going to go from there. We presented at staff meetings after that and we got input from the entire staff. And, uh, later on, Trish, Trish will talk about that. We also collected data from teachers, having them rate their current students on their, um, social emotional skills that they had. And we took a look at, uh, what they were telling us and what we came up with was, we need to explicitly teach these skills, teachers need training, and we need to look for an evidence-based program, school-wide, to help us with tier-one instruction. Uh, the committee attended the NHASP conference and that's where we learned about the DESA program that Karina will talk about in a little bit. And we also investigated a lot of different programs, tons of programs using, um, the CASL framework. And we focused in on two that we really liked, that were evidence-based, Open Circle and Second Step. And you'll hear a little bit about Open Circle in a minute. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. So a proposed addition to our vision statement. Um, and it's, you can see the bolded text is what's been added on. And so of course, the base vision statement is, during their time at ORCSD, students become strong, independent, critical thinkers with a commitment to living ethically and a belief that each of them can and should make a difference in our world. Added on to that, in order to be successful, all students should demonstrate cognitive, affective, and behavioral SEL competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And so that brings in those five strategies that we saw on the CASL. So, um, we did a lot of really important work, um, in our staff meetings that helped teachers really dig deep into where are we all taking the time to deliver that social emotional learning in our, uh, classrooms and throughout the school. And, um, you can see the triangle, um, and the, the way that's set up is that that base, uh, is like the tier-one intervention. So what's just happening regularly in the classroom and school-wide. And then the second small, slightly smaller section is tier-two. So when there needs to be some intervention, the top triangle, of course, being where there needs to be significant intervention for students that need, you know, real explicit teaching consistently, maybe, um, daily support in that area. And, um, these meetings happened at both schools, Moheramit and Mastway. And what came out of it is, uh, in tier-one, both schools were doing a lot of really, really great stuff, things that everybody was aware of, uh, things that were being considered really beneficial and, um, and proving to have success, for sure. And same thing, when we thought about what was happening tier-two, there were a lot of really great things happening. There was some common language, there was some carryover. And then in tier-three, the same, really good stuff coming. But in the end, it was kind of like, well, we're still feeling like we're not hitting the mark. And this slide is a really nice picture. I don't know if it's a nice picture, but, um, it's, it illustrates kind of nicely that, you know, we were going in the right direction, right? But all the efforts were just not aligned. And, um, and that's kind of where we've gotten, that we need to take what we're doing and get us all going the same way. And what that means is more explicit, um, instruction, particularly with teachers delivering it, um, more regularly. Up until now, teachers, of course, are teaching social emotional skills in their classroom, but much of explicit teaching, um, was happening with, uh, school counselors or, um, in pockets here and there. And so what we're thinking about is that expanding that, being more teacher-driven, is, um, what makes all those arrows go the right way. Yeah. That's our hope. So here's a little bit about Open Circle. So here's what you've all been waiting for. Three years, three years in the making, here it is. So our committee has come together and we have, we have some hopes and dreams. And, um, our hope and dream for next year is that we have your support to, um, do some, well, to, to definitely, uh, start one program, which is the DESA program, and then to test drive another program. So the DESA is a standardized, strength-based measure of social emotional competencies. It's for grades K through eight. Um, what it would look like, the assessment would, uh, there's a, a screening called the DESI Mini. It has eight, um, eight, uh, standards that each student would be evaluated by their classroom teacher. It would take a minute per student to fill it out. And then that would kind of give us a baseline. And when we talked about the triangle and the tiers, that would give us kind of this idea of where our students are. And it would also highlight students that we might need to dig a little further, to do a little further assessment and to give them another, more intense kind of screening to, to figure out what it is that we need to do to increase their skills. So whether that means small group work or individual work. Everybody's going though, now with this second program, would receive the, the, um, that everybody's swimming in the same direction with common language and, um, hopefully a positive benefit to our school climate, a decrease in negative behaviors, and an increase in critical thinking skills. And that program is Open Circle. So what we're hoping is that teachers in both Mastway and, um, Moheramit can try out this program. That program is, involves a three-day training, two days in the summer, one day in January. And then during the curriculum is also in line with those standards that we've been talking about. Um, and they would, that would mean classroom teachers delivering two fifteen-minute lessons per week, doing that direct instruction. And then the school counselors or other support staff would be able to do, um, the small group or individual work. And then as we, you know, if we find that students need more, classrooms need more, then we can, you know, always add to that. But this would give a baseline. So when students go on to the middle school, they would all have the same language. And we think that that would have a positive impact. So those are the two programs. So one more computer-based assessment and then another classroom direct instruction. So there you have it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
Yeah.
Um, just thanks for all that work and, um, and maybe to Tricia's point about getting everything aligned. At our last meeting, we heard about a mental health initiative taking place at another level. And I would seem very important and don't know your interaction with the wellness committee and how we're aligning what's being proposed at that level with what's going on here?
Yeah, I'm on the mental health committee as well. And so there is, there's a, there, we've had the K to twelve discussions as well. Um, what's, uh, a couple of, I, a couple of things that, to help make, connect the dots, we were focused on the elementary, but we'd love to see this go K to five. And then, um, and I know that there's work being done at middle school and the high school around advisory, um, and also looking at assessments as well. So the DESA currently, um, is K to eight. And then it also has, it's right now in development for the high school, uh, high school, um, percent. So the idea would be we could do actually K to twelve as an assessment tool that we would use like three times a year to do a general assessment of students' SEL skills. The idea of Open Circle, the piece that was also very attractive to it is that physically it is, you, it's conducted by creating a circle. You sit in a circle, um, and it's not just about the skill development as well as the process piece. And we thought, based on the advisory models for both the middle school and the high school, which is kind of like, let's circle up and talk about what's going on, this would kind of prime the kids that when they arrive in middle school, they're already waiting for like, where's Open Circle? Where is that happening? And that would shift really nicely into the advisory model. So we're kind of looking at, um, those, kind of aligning it up with, um, what the upper grades are looking at as well.
And I, I think that's wonderful and, and really totally supportive of it. Um, I, I think the way I look at mental health, it's not like a kid goes along and they're fine and then they go off a cliff. It's kind of a, it's any one of the diseases that we have that are a progression. And symptomatology becomes more and more manifest. And, uh, at least from my perspective, unless there's really close-knit working between the different levels and you having incredible communication of what they're seeing at the middle school level, what these kids are coming to middle school with, what kids that go to the high school with, um, that's, to me, the way you really reap the most benefit is if you're really working in tandem, um, in parallels. You know, as Trish put it on that model, getting the vectors all aligned.
And that's what, that's what we've been doing.
I, I think, um, the mental health wellness committee, but most of the people who are on the SEL committee are on that as well. Um, and I think part of my role expanding K-12 and also the mental health wellness committee is to bridge those gaps. Because we, as mental health professionals, recognize the importance of the whole child, looking at the entire system and not just within our own buildings. Um, so definitely these-
And it's also important to get the, it's, someone made a comment, well, this SEL stuff is great, but when are you going to teach kids about anxiety and depression? And really getting the community as well to understand the fact that by teaching these skills from a young age on how to manage your emotions, how to make decisions, how to interact socially, by teaching those skills, then we hope to prevent the issues around anxiety, depression, and stress that are happening. And so, really, again, educating as well the community and family. That was nice, too, about Open Circle. There's a parent component to it as well, which I've used it in a previous district and was trained in it. And we did sessions with parents and taking the program just outside of the school, but into the community as well, so.
Thank you for this work. Please.
I just, and I want to thank the committee as well for all the work. Would some of the pieces that currently exist in each of the schools go away as, or this would be added, and how would that fit together?
So, we're to pilot the testing next year.
Okay.
I would hope that, I mean, I do Friendship Circle. I'm in the classroom every day. And, or every four days, I'm in every classroom. And I would hope that I'm still in the classroom, so kids know me. I think that's a huge advantage. And, but we're going to try, that's the balance we're going to play with next year. So, whether I schedule my time during Open Circle time in the classrooms, or there'll be, there'll be a little wiggling around next year to try to figure that out and try to find that, if we can, some kind of balance between the two.
Okay, thanks.
Michael, go ahead.
Maybe you covered this, and I, and it just went by pretty fast, but the test-drive of Open Circle next year, what does that look like? How many classrooms are we talking about? If I were to walk into one of those, what would it look like?
You won't say that. That's a financial, and that's partly the discussion with leadership, discussing how it, we have more than, at both schools, teachers really excited about doing it and wanting to do it. So, that's the next piece that leadership will have to discuss as far as funds that are available and what that looks like. But there's definitely probably more people wanting to test-drive it than we probably can afford at this point in time. I don't know.
In terms of the PD part of it, or?
You're right, the training. Yeah, because there's a two-day training that takes place usually in July and August. And then, you get the program underway, and then there's another training that happens in January. So, yeah.
Could I just jump in?
You sure can.
Thank you. One of the things that's really great about this is that the idea was to do a test-drive for next year, to teachers that were interested in it. And quite frankly, we were pleasantly surprised that a lot more people were interested in being involved in it. So, we are in the process of trying to negotiate, how can we move forward with it for next year and get as many people who are interested in being a part of it? Obviously, there's a financial cost associated with it, and we're trying to work that out. But clearly, the idea would be to fully budget so that we could incorporate it as a full, assuming we choose to adopt it for the 1920 school year. So, there would be a cost associated at that point, too.
So, Michael, we also will be spreading the pilot through every grade level. So, even if we had, say, every fourth grade that wanted to do it, we want to make sure the third grade gets to try it, the second grade gets to try it, and so forth.
Yeah, we're trying to make sure we have at least one at each school, at each grade level.
Is there like a train-the-trainer approach, that as we have new teachers come into the district, that we don't have to?
Yeah. Basically, the way the training works, as has been described, is a three-day training, two days that you do in the summer, and then you basically start implementation. And then, there's another day mid-year where you work with a trainer to refine and process. And yes, once people have been through it, they're familiar with it, and they can certainly train others.
This may be a bigger question than just how, about these programs, but clearly, one thing we need to do is to teach kids to manage these emotions, to have strategies, to recognize when they're under pressure, to seek help. But it seems to me that the pressure and the anxiety also comes from the outside and expectations in the wider community. And so, and I think that, we've talked about this before, that I think a community like Durham skates on a thin line between overpressuring kids and having high demands. And so, I'm just wondering how this fits with looking, I mean, back up, because you could teach kids these strategies, but there's also this other things coming down on them, which is maybe causing some of that anxiety. And so, it's like, it's like, it's like a holistic problem in a way, isn't it? And I'm wondering kind of how that fits to other initiatives that might work with parents, looking at, I don't know, it's a big question, but I mean, it's, there's an outside and there's like an internal thing going on.
Yeah, I think that that is something that we could speak a lot about. I think the community outreach that we've been trying to do throughout the past few years, in particular, Ryan Long did the presentation on dealing with stress and anxiety for parents. I think outreach to parents is important, because certainly, we talk a lot about the expectations, kind of that external pressure. At the high school in particular, there's the perception that four-year college is what you have to do. That's not coming from inside the high school necessarily. We have high expectations for our students, but we also support whatever path they choose. So, some of that is kind of changing community perception, even educating the community. I think when I started here a while, long time ago, community colleges were not, I guess, attended heavily here. I think that has changed. They've adopted a different, they're not technical schools anymore, their community, the community college system, there's a lot of changes they've made to kind of change their programming and also the perception that goes with that. And so, that's kind of been a long, long time coming. So, I think all of these things are going to be a work in progress. But it's definitely something that we recognize and definitely would like to address through community outreach, certainly.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
And Masway, too, we had, this year, we did a thing for kindergarten parents, where myself and Speech Path, the OT, and one of the special ed teachers, we had different topics that we talked about, kind of setting the tone for what's expected at school and kind of doing, and we've talked, we had surveyed parents about what they'd be interested in doing. So, we are really looking at doing that as part of, you know, increasing that as far as doing outreach and kind of educating parents around appropriate expectations, growth mindset, things like that. So, that's definitely a piece that both, all schools are kind of looking at, at how we can reduce some of those stresses from the outside, because we're really aware of how much that is impacting kids as well.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Well, thank you for this enormous amount of work. I mean, it's a long process and look forward to the next step, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have an update on the laptop initiative?
So, just let me do a quick introduction. As the board has been informed several times, we have a K through 12 Technology Committee that's been meeting regularly since probably February, maybe late January, with the intent of putting together a proposal for the board's consideration in the next budget, moving toward a one-to-one solution for technology. In the course of the conversation that we've had around the cellphone policy, parents came forward and said, you know, the time is now in terms of getting the cellphones out of our educational, out of our classrooms as an educational device. And so, in order to effectively do that, we accelerated our work relating to the one-to-one initiative, so we could talk to the board about that tonight. And we have several staff members ready to do that. So, I don't know who the lead speaker is, but it's Nick. Okay, Nick, could you introduce yourself and the team?
Sure. My name is Nick Bellows. I'm the librarian at Oyster River. And Sarah O'Brien and Sunny Sedana are fifth-grade teachers there. Janet Martel is a seventh-grade teacher, and Nico Vines is the tech integrator, and you'll be hearing from all of us. I'll start just by thanking you guys for making the time for us to talk about what I think would be a really exciting and valuable addition to what we can offer to our kids in their educational experience at the middle school. And that would be going to a one-to-one model. During the course of this presentation, cover a couple of things. Just want to cover the basics on what the one-to-one is and some background about that, how technology is being used right now in our school, some of the challenges that are presented by the scarcity of devices, and maybe some of the things that teachers could do if we had better access to devices. Also, talk a little bit about a plan for professional development to make sure our teachers are really fully leveraging this technology, as well as some of the budgetary and technical elements of our rollout here. Before I get into that, though, I'd like to make maybe just four kind of big-picture goals that one-to-one would help us accomplish. One would just be providing more equitable access to technology and the information that that technology can get you to. Also, that we recognize the amount of work and collaboration and coordination that would have to go between our building-level committee, the district-level committee, administration, IT, to just make this rollout and implementation successful. Our teachers and our students are eager and willing and ready to have access to these devices and fully take advantage of the learning that they can help provide, the learning opportunities they can provide. And we're really confident that if you were to approve this initiative, that we could rise to the challenge of having a successful implementation in a very tight timeline. So, with that said, just kind of go to the next, oh, can I work the slide here? At the most basic level, one-to-one means that you have enough mobile devices that every kid has access to one. There's a lot of different models to that. And we really benefit from the fact that this movement is not a new movement. It's existed for well over 20 years. Our neighbors in Maine have been doing this for almost 20 years. And some of our neighbors just locally, but also some of our really high-functioning districts throughout the state have also already started to do this. So, the big takeaway for me there is we have a lot of places that we can look to see effective ways to do this implementation and also the mistakes that other people have made along the way. There has been a lot of research done about the positive outcomes, or just the outcomes in general, positive or negative, that comes with the increased access to technology. And I hope, I think it was shared with you, there was a recent meta-analysis of those studies, and the outcomes that were found from that meta-analysis are listed up there. Several of those, most of those align with the 21st century skills that we're really working on trying to help develop in our kids so that they're going to be successful as they progress through life. I'm going to turn it over now to Janet, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about how we use technology in our classroom.
Thank you. Well, I've been in the district for 24 years, so I've really seen the change in teaching, instruction, and methods as technology has grown and has been introduced into our learning community. I think, as you all know, competency-based education stresses the mastery of the skills needed for the 21st century. And the philosophy embraces the idea that content is ever-evolving and changing. At Oyster River, the teachers use new and emerging technologies to teach these skills. For example, in my seventh-grade science classroom, students are studying such topics as epigenetics and biotechnology. These topics are too new to appear or in textbooks. So, students, through the use of technology, have been able to explore these topics. And they continue to need readily-available digital tools to access knowledge and to search for and evaluate differing opinions relating to this new knowledge. The other thing that competency-based education relies on is the importance of formative assessment, or regular and frequent checks to assess student knowledge. We're lucky enough now that there's a wealth of digital tools that allow teachers to do this. And we already have many, if not all, ORMS teachers willing to embrace the use of these tools, such as Google Forms, Plaklers, Poll Everywhere, Padlet, Kahoot, and Quizlet. For example, just yesterday, I knew that I needed to do a quick check with my students to assess their understanding of DNA before we could go on. And I could do that with an online game, and I could immediately see the areas that I needed to review with them and reteach. ORMS recognizes the need to foster collaborative skills in their students, and technology's allowing ORMS teachers to create activities and projects that call for collaboration. Groups of students, each with their own digital device, can now work together on the same narrative, slideshow, video, or graphic organizers. And what's really exciting is teachers can also join in and give real-time feedback as the students work. This is something that's very exciting for me as a science teacher, because now my students can collect data, they can share it with each other, they can work collaboratively to analyze that data. And then, I can also join in that group effort for data collecting and analyzing. We, as a staff, observed how technology is helping our students develop the organizational skills needed for success in life. Digital calendars, digital binders, and learning management tools such as Google Classroom and Moodle have allowed our students to effectively set goals, prioritize work, make decisions, and plan their work. On my team, for example, students and parents can readily access handouts, instructional videos, graphic organizer tools, and project calendars. Learning no longer solely takes place in the classroom. On the team that I'm part of, our students explore a topic they're passionate about during our weekly Genius Hour. And with technology and with our guidance and oversight, our students are being encouraged to seek the advice of experts in various content fields, to digitally share their knowledge with others outside of ORMS community, and even to collaborate with others outside of the community. And I think all of the staff at Oyster River just sees this growing and growing and growing, and it's just not the school it was 24 years ago.
Thank you.
See you next.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm Sunny Sedana. I'm a fifth-grade teacher. I've been at the middle school for close to a decade. And in that decade, I can tell you the educational program that I've seen amongst the different content areas has drastically changed. In just 10 years versus what Janet's 24 is, based on what we see in technology and advances, that this district is already sponsored. So, it's really important to recognize the fact that this district has sponsored big pieces of technology advancement in the classroom, whether it be, you know, subscribing to certain programs that we can use, that Janet talked about, by the devices that we already have and whatnot. And as middle school teachers, you know, we're proud of our program. We're proud of the academic rigor that our students consistently amaze us with, and we're really happy that we're in a supportive district that's very high-performing. And we want to keep that reputation as well. Now, that being said, our middle school program does face some serious challenges if you really look at it for student technologies needs being met equitably at our school, with the resources that the district provides us with. Now, although technology use in the middle school may look different between a fifth-grade classroom and an eighth-grade classroom, as I'm sure you can imagine, each of the grade levels share pretty parallel challenges independent of their unique mechanics. So, at fifth grade, for example, we have one cart shared between four homerooms. That's the middle school model where four homerooms share one cart, 25 computers. The challenge of fifth grade is that we have two teams in fifth grade that share that cart. So, in other words, it may not sound like a challenge at first, but if you have two LA, you have a language arts teacher, let's say, who is pretty dependent on the cart for word processing and having the student maybe submit a lot of things online, like as they have. But when you have a team that's sharing, when you have two teams that are sharing one cart, now you have two LA teachers that are sort of competing for those things. So, these sorts of competitive issues of access are pretty rampant through the building. Because technology is such an issue in our teams, we actually shape much of our scheduling for learning and instruction, especially during project-based learning units, based on when we have computer access. So, in other words, when the kids are learning, certain content is driven by device access, which is by far not a best practice or a good model in education. So, like, imagine the overly alert fifth grader in the morning who's coming to complete her, typing her literary review first thing, and where her peers and her friends all learn best at a certain time period, usually in the morning for fifth graders. They get in there and they find from their teacher, well, you're not going to be able to type that up till the end of the day, because that's when we have computers available. And in her dreams the night before, you know, as parents, that she's been thinking about that literary review till she gets to school that morning. Well, these situations happen, and they happen too far of a reality. I'd also be hard-pressed not to mention that in addition to the impact on learning comes the dedicated time, many planned times, that teachers must take in coordinating a schedule simply to reserve carts where they could better be using this time planning periods to develop lessons, co-plan, or engage in the plethora of other tasks that you know we have, all dedicated to student learning. So, these truths about device juggling in the schedule and lack of access occurs at each of the grade levels amongst all types of classes. the dedicated time, many planned times, that teachers must take in coordinating a schedule simply to reserve carts where they could better be using this time planning periods to develop lessons, co-plan, or engage in the plethora of other tasks that you know we have, all dedicated to student learning. So these truths about device juggling in the schedule and lack of access occurs at each of the grade levels amongst all types of content areas, and I would argue even more so as the students advance through the years and use of technology resources are even more scarce. I realize that there was a time and place where the issues that we're talking about tonight may have been trivial, or our student access to technology might be considered satisfactory. But education and the potential it can reach did not exist as it does now thanks to a lot of our technology advances that have occurred in our society and definitely within public schools. And if there's one thing our district does well, and any district can always do better, it's push kids to their potential. The one-to-one initiative eliminates a lot of roadblocks to learning and allows educators and kids to enhance their learning and instruction and push kids to that potential. And the question would be how? So Sarah's going to talk a little bit about how that happens.
Hi, I'm Sarah O'Brien. I teach with Sunny in 5th grade. And before I talk about how this could possibly look in my classroom, I think it's important to note that by adding more technology into my classroom does not mean kids would be on computers all the day, all the time. As of right now, when I get computers, my students and I become focused solely on completing the typed or online assignments. When they don't finish, they often have to wait hours or days to complete their assignments, and they lose momentum. I end up altering my lessons to make sure we get to use the technology when we have it instead of when we need it. All classrooms will look differently with increased technology. When I imagine my classroom with more technology, it would not mean students behind a screen five days a week all day. It would mean integrating computers into portions of my lesson instead of having to use them for the whole block when I have them. It would mean I have time to teach my students how to use a computer, not just ask them to complete assignments. I wouldn't have to worry when I have to take 15 minutes to show them how to copy and paste using keyboard shortcuts, because I know tomorrow I will still have access to computers, which is a true story, but I didn't have a computer the next day. I think most importantly, it would give my class the opportunity to collaborate with other teachers and students. Like Sunny said earlier, we'd have a lot less time planning when we can use the computers and more time planning how we can use them. It will make our work accessible by parents and the community. In general, it will broaden the audience of our work and make it more authentic for students. I imagine that each piece of writing in my language arts class would be accessible to other students in the school, parents, teachers, and also easily saved for portfolios. Increased technology will allow me to share more information with families. Lastly, it could help me create personalized student-centered lessons by using programs such as Spelling City and IXL. These programs track student progress and give me live data on how a student is doing and what they need to know more of. This does not replace my lessons, but it allows students and myself to pinpoint specific skills with incompetencies that they need to practice. Students will be able to track their own progress as well. To talk to Sue's point, which is up on the PowerPoint, I have many students who would benefit from access to assistive technology for writing, researching, editing, reading, and much more. Since we do not have constant access to technologies, these accommodations are not always possible for students. When they do have access, they are often not as fluent using the programs because they don't have them all the time. I asked my students this morning how a classroom would look if we had computers all the time. A lot of students were excited, and that's all they could say. But the one quote that was straight to the point simply said, "We would work faster and more efficiently." Another student noted, "If every class has a computer cart, I think we would be able to master typing, and we could learn more about technology. Technology will be big in the future, so we need these skills." Nico's going to talk to you a little more about the classroom.
Hi. So I'm Nico Vines. This is my second year here at Oyster River. I came from a school in Lowell, Massachusetts that was a Title I charter school, which had a much different background, but we had just done a one-to-one rollout when I came here. And when I came to this district, I was so impressed at the middle school, at the level of enthusiasm around using technology. It really made my job, thanks to, in part, Kathy Stetson, who created the position at the middle school and now works at the high school. But it was so refreshing to see teachers of all ages, of all expertise, new and old, to use technology in the classroom in ways that really leverage learning. And so when we talked about this rollout, it was a dream that we had, maybe three years down the line, as this committee started talking, as we started coming together earlier this year. And having the opportunity to speak to you now about maybe even shortening that timeline is very exciting, and we're really grateful to have that. I'm really just here to talk about our professional development approach. I think that what makes ORMS unique in its readiness for technology one-to-one program is the fact that its teachers are ready to implement it right away. And I say very confidently, having worked with every teacher in the building at this point over the last two years, that you could put a laptop cart in any one of their rooms, and they would have an exciting idea as to how to use that right away, without any additional PD. So we conducted a survey of teachers on their attitudes towards technology, on their feelings towards the urgency of having more devices at the school. And 77% of our teachers surveyed said that they would like opportunities to collaborate with colleagues on how to use technology within their discipline, so within their subject matter. And 75% considered having tools to help them stay current on new technological trends and urgent need. And with this opportunity is actually perfect timing because we have some extra teacher workshop days at the end of the year that we're looking for ideas as what we could do to really ready our teachers. And I think that a technology boot camp of some sort would really be ideal in just ensuring that our teachers feel confident and ready moving forward with a one-to-one program should we be able to pull it off for September. Based on our survey feedback, PD would really be a teacher-led collaborative effort. Instead of, you know, the media specialist and the tech integrator speaking at the front of the room, we would actually pull the teachers and have the teachers train other teachers on exciting things that they've already done in the classroom. And even more exciting would be to instill some kind of pineapple model where teachers could actually just open up their classrooms for other teachers to walk through and passively observe in the back and see those programs and those projects being used in the classroom in live time with the students. That would be my personal dream. So taking all that into account, it just seems like this is very doable for us to do as a school right away. It's something that we only dreamed about at the beginning of the year, and now that it seems like it could become more and more of a reality in a more quick deadline, I mean, timeline, we're ready. So I'm going to turn it over to Josh.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you to the middle school staff for coming out tonight and preparing this and speaking. So I get the fun part, the money. So last week, I made a lot of phone calls, talked to a lot of people, and tried to pull together some rough budget ideas for you guys. And so what I was able to come up with was this device right here is what we're kind of looking at right now. It is a two-in-one laptop from Dell. Flips over, becomes a tablet. This is a touchscreen. It also supports a pen. The screen itself is reinforced with Gorilla Glass. It's got rubberized edges around the base, around the side. So it's got built-in cameras. When you flip it over, there's a camera on the keyboard, so kids can look at the screen and see what's projected out there. I know you wanted to see it. If you want, I can, we can do it after or now?
After.
Okay. So this is the device that we're looking at. So I looked at the next four years from the Long Range Playing Committee in terms of student enrollment. The average is 675 students. So I rounded it up to the 700 mark, so we'd have at least 25 spares on hand. Because obviously, when you're talking about all these students having devices, if one goes down, or more than one goes down, it's going to be, we need to make sure that there's devices ready to go. So looking at doing a four-year lease on these devices, and at the end, we would turn them back to Dell, because after four years, I think in the hands of middle schoolers, there's probably not much we're going to want to use them for. And so the estimate that I was able to come up with is around $75,000 a year for those four years. Another topic of conversation from the other board meetings was the notion of content filtering, securing devices. So I also found a new product that is a cloud-based filtering. So as students leave our campus, they are going to have the benefits of filtering no matter where they go, home here, McDonald's, wherever they connect to Wi-Fi. And so that is a per-device cost for the life of the device. So if we look at four years, it's going to be that $2,500 a year. I'm sure we could probably wrap that in with the cost of the device, the lease, the whole nine yards. And then there's a lot of options for cases. And I tried to talk to some other schools that have one-to-one initiatives, and some of the ones that have gone with a more bulky, more protective case find that the students ditch the case because they don't want to carry a backpack, they don't want to carry this, and they just throw it in their existing backpack. So one of the notions that Dr. Morse and I talked about was just the notion of those neoprene laptop sleeves, where you could slide it in, throw it in a bookbag, and then they're not carrying that. There are other, more ruggedized cases. I did find one today that actually snaps. I don't know how well it would work, how much bulk it would add, but it's designed for this laptop, and it actually snaps around the top and the bottom to kind of increase that. And I think, I think it changes it from about a three-foot drop height to six feet, to where it'll sustain the drop. So I don't know if we have any six-foot middle schoolers that like to drop laptops, but it should survive. So to kind of take those and give you the next four years with the cost of the cases being an upfront cost, this is what we're looking at for the next four years as estimated costs. Now, there's certainly other things that as we come up, I'm sure we'll find needs for, we're going to learn from mistakes, but this is what I was able to come up with between the board meetings. So any questions for me? Yes, sir.
I know we had talked about the software that we saw up in Hanover, where the teachers can actually see what they're looking at on their devices. Is that...
Yeah, so that content filter software, one of the reasons I really like it is it actually has that functionality built into it. And what it'll actually do, and I have a video. I will email you the video, so you can, I'll email the whole board so you can all see it. It's a 10-minute video. And they have a feature where we can pull in the roster data from Power School. So all their kids during that timeframe will show up, and it uses machine learning to look at what the kids are doing. And if there's a kid, say they're on Spotify, or something that really doesn't make a whole lot of educational sense right at that time, it'll actually float that student to the top of the list and highlight them for the teacher to go click on that and pull up their screen. So it has that built into it as well as the content filtering. So I thought that was a good, all-encompassing solution. So, yes, sir.
So I'm kind of, as I'm thinking through like our district, and first of all, it's kind of amazing the Rube Goldberg thing you guys have had to go through to do technology, because there's clearly just not enough. I mean, I think the use of the cellphone was like kind of the tip of the spear. It was like, the technology use came in, it was how could you get a device that you could use that you needed right now? And the cellphone became the de facto thing, since it was inexpensive and people could have it. My question with this is, especially in a cloud-based environment, is like, a lot of kids are going to have a computer at home, and they have the computer at school. I'm just, you know, again, I'm aging out of middle school, but I have a pretty good idea about middle schoolers. And it's like, I'm wondering, do they need to take the device home? I'm almost like, does the device, could it stay at the school? Because the vast majority of kids, it's like, they need the device at school, but they have the device at home. With the advent of cloud-based technology and cloud-based applications, it becomes kind of cumbersome carrying, transporting the device. And it, in fact, probably leads to, I mean, I know you have 25 device leadway, but you know, there's going to be a percentage of kids that don't use them, and oh, by the way, since you can't use a cellphone anymore, that they're all going to go to the office and be calling. So do we really need that portability?
So I think your question is really a good question, Alan. It really boils down to the equity issue. The fact that students can take them home doesn't mean they have to. So if a youngster has a laptop at home and they don't want to take the school laptop home, they don't have to. But the option of taking them home has to exist in order for the youngsters who don't have that availability of technology at home. And in fact, in terms of internet access, you know, Josh alluded to McDonald's, but the cellphone carriers offer a very cheap connection for families who need it and can't afford it.
Do we have Wi-Fi at the library, like this Durham Public? I should know this. So in essence, they could technically take the device from the middle school and just truck over to the Durham Public Library and use it there, right?
Yeah, Comcast also has a low-cost internet program, Comcast Internet Essentials, for families that would qualify for free and reduced lunch. So Comcast usually gives us a bunch of pamphlets, and I give those to Doris to pass out to parents, so they know the options there. I think we've only had two parents investigate it that have gotten back to me, so I'm not sure how widely used it is, but there are options.
And of course, the major advantage of using the school device is it's filtered. So, you know, parents don't have to worry about youngsters regularly going off track. Now, I would tell you, my experience in Maine is that there will be kids who figure out how to get around the filter. By the time they figure out how to get around the filter, Josh's crew figures out how to get around that, get around. And it becomes a bit of a chase. The filtering companies try to stay up. So it's not 100% solution. It's probably a 95% solution. And so it comes under the 5% rule that I always have on everything. 5% of the kids will figure out how to get around the problem, therefore, they'll become 95% of Josh's work. The other 95% will use them, you know, just as they're designed to be used. So I think the issue of being able to take them home is critical in terms of addressing the equity issue.
I have like, one more with that. So this will in essence become a fixed cost, though, because we're going to keep rolling the lease over at four years.
That's right. Once you get, I mean, so we are, you know, when Michael raised the issue at the last board meeting, we referenced the difference between what we budgeted for our health insurance and what we thought this might cost. And so the health insurance came in at about $276,000 less than we anticipated as we built the budget. So this still leaves a good amount of money for us to anticipate either going into the CIP or into the emergency fund at the end of the next fiscal year. So part of the budgetary process that Josh and I went through is, you know, let's try to control the cost. Now, I would, in fact, Josh, you should put that machine on the table so that even as we're talking, they can be touching it and getting a sense of it. This is a rugged machine. This is designed for students. It's not junk. It's not something you'd buy at Best Buy or Walmart. It's designed by Dell as an enterprise unit, which means it's designed for heavy-duty use. The reason this price is so low, even though it probably seems high to you guys, is that Microsoft is actually subsidizing the cost to the various vendors trying to get these units out into schools. So as an example, 10 years ago, when I was doing this in Maine, the unit was $1,000. This individual unit, as we're talking about it tonight, is $430. So major difference in acquisition cost from just 10 years ago. And part of it is that Microsoft is coming in and subsidizing the cost of the device at the vendor level, which allows them to put a rugged unit in our hands to consider this evening.
If they do decide to not take it home for, I'm sure it won't be every day of the year, what is it, how does that look? Because they don't have lockers, they don't have locks in the lockers at the middle school.
Sure, they would leave them with their teams. So every student at the middle school is on a team, Sunny's team, Janet's team. So whoever has that homework, we'll just house the computers for overnight.
Denise?
What would happen to the current computers that are at the middle school?
Thanks, Denise. So, you know, there's lots of options that Josh and I have considered, and we're not ready, so I just really want to make this clear, because if I don't make it clear, the high school will choke me. The high school wants to take a couple of years to get to this level of one-to-one. They feel like they want to spend a lot of time in professional development. Nico talked about the technology boot camp happening right at the end of the school year and taking advantage of these four staff development days that we have coming up in June. The high school, though, is still in the same boat as the middle school is currently, which means they're struggling for access, they're jockeying for access, you know. They're, as Sarah said, you know, the time she needs the machine isn't necessarily the time she gets the machine. That same scenario happens at the high school. So what Josh and I talked about is taking the current units and moving them up to the high school, which would increase the number of cars. them up to the high school, which would increase the number of carts at the high school and help alleviate the stress on teachers at the high school. It wouldn't get us to a one-to-one. It would get us to about two-to-one at the high school. So it would help in terms of taking that pressure off teachers and using them for educational purposes. And I think the teachers would be thrilled at the high school to be able to have two carts per department instead of one. We have departments at the high school that have none, like the art department has no, no cart assigned to it. So we would take the middle school devices that we currently have and move them to the high school and help alleviate the struggle at the high school.
I have one more question, actually. So I don't know where we are in the lease of those other computers that we're going to send up to the high school, but it would seem to me that, that we're, should be, again, your whole thing was to try to standardize the hardware, that we, if we're going to go with like this kind of tablet format, and we know that the high school is going to go to like a one-to-one integration eventually down the road, that we begin to like dovetail in that device? I mean, if something is coming off of its lease...
Everything should line up. This is year one of that current lease, so we have two years left, and the high school would like two years to get ready. So it should, that one should tail off, and then by then, we should have a plan in place for what the high school is going to do. So it actually would go really nice.
So I'm wondering, Dr. Morse, about timing, if the board chooses to authorize this, whether, when you would, won't need a decision on that? Is it something I put on, I mean, I don't know how other people feel, put on as an action item for the next meeting?
Sure. If the board is not ready to make a motion this evening, which typically you wouldn't be on a first experience to a presentation, I would ideally like to get it on, at the latest, the next agenda item, largely because of getting the machines in, configuring them, and being ready to disperse them to the staff in the fall. Every year, Josh is involved in that same process. Last summer, it was about, it was about over 600 units, and it takes them the entire summer really to be ready. And then he sets up a distribution plan with the staff on the first day of school. He's got it down to a science. So we need as much time as, as the board can provide us in order to be ready for the fall.
I guess, what's the feeling? Next meeting, are people ready to act now? Longer, a longer time?
If we could just discuss it a little longer, maybe we can make the decision tonight. I mean, we've, at least you and I and a couple others here have seen it in action. And I know we can speak to the value of it. I mean, remember, the, one thing I noticed, especially in Hanover, was the teaching didn't stop at the door. The teaching was still going on in the hallway because they had their device with them. Remember, we were talking to them in the hallway. They were enthralled in their device, learning, you know, putting together their project. One kid was doing math, another was doing history, and they weren't really talking, they were talking to each other, but they were talking to each other about the lesson. And it was, I was mind-boggling to me as someone who obviously didn't grow up with technology, you know, I mean, they still used chalk back then. But, you know, so I, one thing I said in the last meeting was, I think we have to make a commitment as a district to go to the one-to-one, you know, because that's going to really give our kids, I think, bring them into the 21st century where they're going to be using technology in college. They're going to be using it eventually in the high school, you know. I mean, I teach college and I use it, you know, just not to this extent, because I don't have the knowledge. But I mean, it's, it's out there and it's going to be used. And luckily given to Mike's idea, was, Michael's idea was, it's going to fit into the budget. So...
I mean, going to our observations, like, my sense is that every, if you look at the comparative school districts, you know, some have different cellphone policies, but they're all going to one-to-one. You know, I was just down in Pennsylvania to a school that was, middle school's like, you know, by some measures, the top-performing middle school in Pennsylvania, and one-to-one. This is, this is a direction, I think, that schools that are ambitious to, you know, bring students up to speed in technology and integrate it, I think this is almost a uniform direction. Now...
So I actually see, ironically enough, the cellphone policy in this linked. You can't do one without the other. So like, as I'm looking at the cellphone policy, which has taken away all exemptions, I don't think it's, I don't think that's a workable policy unless you implement this. I really don't. It will create a hole in the school curriculum. It really will. So when I'm looking at, so I, you know, it's clear to me that this is an issue at the middle school that you guys are working around. We should go to a real fix to it. I still, I don't, you know, I've become so less spontaneous over the years that I hate to spontaneously approve this right now, just because if there are questions. But the way I see this working, I can definitely see a vote coming on the next, the next meeting. I, first of all, think it's the way to go, but I think that it would line up that you could then put the cellphone policy through a first read and a second read. So the way I think process-wise, I could see the next meeting, we approve the one-to-one technology and then approve the first reading of the cellphone policy. This is my two cents. I think, I think they're linked.
Dr. Morse, would there be ways in which you could still do, I mean, I mean, I can't tell the sentiment of the board, but I mean, my sense is that, you know, there's support for this. If, would there be ways of using those two weeks still to do work to prepare on the assumption that this is probably going to go through, or is this two weeks you lose?
It's not two weeks lost. I mean, you know, I did tell the tech team that the board likes to process at least over two meetings. So, you know, it would be wonderful if you felt comfortable to do it tonight, but we also understand that, you know, two weeks isn't going to make a difference in terms of us being ready for the fall. So if the board feels more comfortable doing that two weeks, I think it's okay. I would ask if there's any outlying questions like we do in any other meeting. Is there anything that the tech team from the middle school could provide you that you didn't have tonight that would assist you in making the decision at the next meeting? Or are you comfortable with the work they've done? Does it feel complete enough? So it's just a matter of revisiting it and seeing where the board's collective decision is.
So is there more information we need, Dan?
Just for the sake of the discussion, we did address it at the last meeting. Dr. Morse, if you could just maybe briefly review how this does fit into the budget?
Sure. So, you know, every time that we build a budget, Sue and I try to take a best guess at what our health insurance cost will be. We have to make that guess in October, November, December, knowing that we won't really have an answer until April or May, well after deliberative session has occurred. And, you know, I gave you a history of how health insurance rates have been over the years. We've had rates in the double digits and the high double digits. We've had zeros. But Sue and I, when we put a budget together, basically are trying to read the tea leaves. And, you know, it's hard to read the tea leaves because we don't really know what the usage is of our health insurance, and so part of our cost is related to usage. So if we have a lot of staff out, we might initially put in, you know, 15%, 16%. When, you know, we built the fall budget, we thought, okay, let's start with 10%, because when we compared it to previous years, we didn't see the kind of major outages that occur. And those things are sometimes tragic, like heart attacks, and sometimes wonderful, like pregnancies, but they result in the use of the insurance. And so it's really very difficult, nearly impossible, for Sue and I to kind of come up with a scientific way of estimating what that will be. So generally, our fallback position is 10%. Then along the way, we get what's called a guaranteed maximum rate. That's still not the number, but we then knew that 10% was too much, and during the budget process, we reduced it because the guaranteed maximum rate was going to be 5.6%, I believe. And so that's what we ended up collectively as a board saying, okay, we know what the guaranteed maximum rate is. That means that whatever happens, the worst it can be is 5.6%. And then several more months go by, the budget's been approved by the community, and lo and behold, the number that came in was point 0.3%. So it was way lower than the guaranteed maximum, which was a blessing. But the board and the community had already approved the budget, and so that left $276,000 dedicated in the health insurance line. Now, one of the major goals of the school board during budget deliberations was to restore our emergency fund, because you might recall that we used all of it to get through this particular budget year. And that was $500,000. So as Sue just alluded to, we think we can get some money back to the emergency fund out of the current budget as we end. And then my dream was, since the health insurance came in so low compared to what we thought it was going to be, that we would then restore more to the emergency fund at the end of the next budget year. Michael raised the issue that I hadn't thought of until he raised it, which was, you know, how much of that could we port toward coming to a solution on one-to-one? And that is a result of the conversation that was going on amongst board members and the community about the issue of equity. And that issue really boils down to sort of where Al was coming from in his question, which was, you know, 100% of the children don't come in from affluent families. And we always have children who live in poverty. We have, we have families who live check to check. We have families who live on the edge and aren't recognized as needing support, but really can't afford cellphones or technology for their, for their families. Now, in truth, probably a majority of our families can afford the technology for their families, but there is a good percentage of families that struggle, and we need to recognize that. And that became a pretty powerful part of, I thought, the cellphone presentations that we heard from parents. And one parent in particular really articulated, I think, as powerfully as I've ever heard, the distinction between a personal device and a school device. And, you know, the underlying rationale was, you know, if you have your personal device, it's based on your family's ability to pay. If you're provided by the school system, it's based on the school system's ability to distribute the technology necessary across all income levels. So I took a while to get there, Dan, on purpose, because I just really wanted to walk through the numbers. So if the board is comfortable, either tonight or in two weeks, of supporting the one-to-one initiative, I would want you to know that Sue and I and Josh talked at different points that it was really important that we didn't spend down the difference in health insurance and that we were frugal in our approach. And, and that's where we ended up here. So this still would leave somewhere in the nature of $200,000 or thereabouts, in our estimation, assuming, you know, emergencies come up in the upcoming school year, to either fund, put money into the emergency fund or to put money into the capital account, if that's where the board ultimately wants to put it. But it allows the flexibility of the board to make that decision as we go through the next school year. So this was, you know, a very deliberate and rational approach that Josh and I and Sue thought would work, that would allow the middle school to go to one-to-one without breaking the bank.
I just, for my, I'm sorry. My questions have been answered on this. I would be ready to vote for this. I was surprised that, I thought the amount would be much higher than this, to be able to move forward. And it seems to me such a good opportunity to do it. So I mean, I would be ready to move forward myself. Denise?
Yeah, I think I would as well. I particularly appreciated the feedback that we got in the faculty survey. You know, it was really enlightening to read all the comments in terms of how technology is currently being used, what isn't able to be used, all of that, and definitely convinced me. I was like, wow, you know, we, that we definitely need to go in this direction. And I agree. I, you know, really commend Josh for getting all these numbers put together so quickly. And I think, I'm ready to go ahead and vote in favor of this. And then I think we can set the cellphone discussion as a separate item, perhaps for our next meeting, perhaps looking at a first draft or what have you.
Alex, Brian?
I just wanted to thank the committee. I'm sure there's, you put it together so fast, and I'm sure there's better things you wanted to do on vacation, like not have to do stuff for work. But I didn't think it would happen this fast, but I really, I'm glad you guys put it together. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Michael? So this is a really interesting byproduct of the personal device policy discussion. So it's, I think it's an interesting road of how we got here. And I do, I agree with Brian. I really appreciate the effort that's gone into getting us this far. Are we totally comfortable that, with a device like this, wherever it ended up, that, first of all, does this address the educational concern about the policy change that we're looking at around personal devices? I don't know who the director of that question to, but that's, that's where we started on this.
Right.
And so that is really important to me, that we are certain that we're good there.
Yeah, and just to speak to that, I really, I've been watching the board meetings since the cellphone policy became a current issue for us. And I kind of just want to lend to the fact that the reason that the equity issue hasn't been brought up at the middle school before in regards to technology is not even just because of the students that can't afford cellphones, but the parents' right to tell their student that they don't want them to bring a cellphone to school. And we support that as teachers. So we've done our best so that we can disperse the technology that we can give them from the school-issued devices, so that we can say, hey, if you have a cellphone and you can use it, can you use it now so that we can use the school-issued devices to all the students that choose not to bring their cellphone or don't have a cellphone at school? So that's what solved our equity issue before. So if that's going away, then we are going to have a huge deficit in what we're using in the classroom, because it was never bring out your cellphone if you don't have a cellphone, you don't get to do the assignment. It was, if you do have a cellphone, could you use it to research so that we can use the three computers over here, so for the, for students that need the school-issued device? So this would really solve that issue. And I think that Josh has done an amazing job in such a short period of time of finding something that solves both the camera aspect of the kids that are using it for podcasting, for filming, for time-lapse projects, as well as the durability aspect. I mean, I've read like five reviews on this device, and it really is created for schools and particularly for our age range of schools. So I really do believe that a device like this, especially where at the elementary school, they're using more iPads, and that's kind of where their creativity is coming from. And then all the way up to the high school where they're using a variety of devices, but mostly laptops. This is that hybrid that kind of lends to coming from a fourth grader that's using iPads, attaching a keyboard to it, but still having a lot of the same usability, and then moving that up to the high school where they're using it really as a work-production tool, as a laptop, as we use it in our, you know, everyday business. So I really do believe that this is a really great solution for that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Since you're, since you're here at the mic now...
There you go, Nico. You all right?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not an educator. A few slides back, you used the term pineapple model.
Yeah.
What is the pineapple model?
Okay, so that's actually a new professional development thing that's sweeping through schools. And I know that elementary tech integrators are actually the ones that introduced it to me. A pineapple is a symbol of hospitality in Hawaii. So basically, a pineapple chart is something that's posted in a central area in your school. And if a teacher is doing something really neat with technology, they sign up on the chart. They just throw it up there that during these times, my class is doing this, and if you're interested, you are welcome in my room. And you can passively, you can prep in the background, you can passively walk through, no critiques, no feedback, just walk in, see how it's really being used with our students, walk out, and that's it. And if you love it, we can collaborate on that later, or the teacher can really change it up to fit what they need it for. But that's just kind of, because the middle school has building challenges as well, it's kind of hard for us to collaborate across competencies a lot, across grades and specialties. So it really would lend itself to being able to just walk through a classroom and, you know, and just be able to passively observe what's really happening as a professional development model, instead of being in the back of a room, wondering when you're going to see that, how this actually works, and if it really does work with the students.
How satisfied do you think the students would be with this particular device?
I think they'd be pretty thrilled with it, to be quite honest. I mean, we each have advisory at the end of the day, and I kind of showed it to my seventh-grade advisory kids, thinking at the seventh and eighth grade level, like, how do you really get them very excited about technology? Because they've got the latest iPhone, and they've got the latest this. And they were like, this is the coolest thing. Like, we need this. Who do I write to? So I was just like, well, hold on, like, let's...
And then you gave him Michael's number, right?
This is better than my laptop at home.
Yeah, the thing I like about it actually is the size, ironically enough, because a laptop is so freaking bulky for the most part.
Right.
I mean, my wife was trying to get like the old Mac Air, because they had like an 11-inch, and it's just slightly bigger than this. So it gives you a lot of computing power, but a lot of portability. And so I think... And so I think that device, particularly for the age range we're talking with, is really good size.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Sorry, I brought this back to me from my thought process.
Go ahead.
Okay. So other questions, not necessarily on the same track. Jim, you mentioned that we would be developing an agreement for care of the devices?
Yes.
I think that's important. I don't know that I necessarily feel like I need to see that before we, before we talk about going ahead with this. The form that that takes, what kind of liability the student and their family are taking on with this, are they taking it home over the summer? Those sort of things, I think, are, the details of how this gets rolled out are, I know, hard to pull together in two weeks, but I think are important to how this.
Yeah, and we'll bring models in for you guys to see. But again, because we're not the first one out of the gate, and this is a 20-year effort, I had them in Maine. And basically, you have the acceptable use for all of policy and a care, you know, how you care for the machine and so forth. And, you know, abuse means that the student doesn't lose. So here's the issue on equity. You can't take the machine away, but you can then say, the only place you can use the machine now is at school if you, you know, abuse the machine. And part of, part of what I liked about this is its durability, the idea that it can drop and not break like my iPhone, is really important, the durability. And so there's lots of models, Michael. The one, there were a couple that I found really didn't work in Maine, was charging families $50, you know, for insurance. And the reason it didn't work is because you're dealing with families who can't afford the technology, they can't afford the $50. So the model that ultimately we gravitated toward in Maine is self-insurance, which is why, in Josh's numbers, he's talked about getting extra. Doesn't mean that you ignore children who are abusing the machine, but machines do, and these happen to be solid-state machines, so you don't have the movable hard drives. So now you're into a piece of equipment that has no moving parts. So failure is going to be most likely related to manufacturer, not to abuse. Whereas water, they're okay with water, what they're not okay with is coffee and sticky liquid soda, that kind of stuff.
Water is okay with water.
Yeah, keyboard is okay. Yeah, it's not wa, yeah, it's not waterproof.
It doesn't need a bath.
Yeah. So I think that the best, what I've learned is the least intrusive way of doing it is to self-insure, and that just means buying extra units. And if a unit fails, then Josh, probably what we'll do is we'll actually put them in the library, and then Nick and Nico can move them in and out and get the machine that needs to be repaired to the tech team, and they'll take that machine out and get it repaired. And then we can just keep the machines, you know, at the fingertips of students is where we want them. So that's what I've learned in my experience with them, to take responsibility as a district, don't try to shift it off, because it's just a really big pain.
Yeah.
And so we'll get that developed in front of the board.
Yeah. I'm glad to hear the enthusiasm about this device, and I think it seems like a good solution. Do we think it would still be a good solution in four years, if this is a four-year lease?
I think not. You know, that's why it's a four-year lease, because the technology keeps on moving. And this is a good solution for today, and by the time we get to recycle time, the technology will have moved forward, that will be ready to move forward with technology. What my, again, my experience, Michael, is the technology is ever-changing, and what, and this is the latest device available for students, but for years now, it'll be, as Josh alluded to, kind of sad and ready to go back.
Yeah. I hear the high school staff wanting to take a little bit more measured approach to getting there. This is going to put pressure on them, right?
Yep.
Students coming in with this experience and to a certain extent with this expectation.
The high school staff is very excited about the one-to-one option. They just would like a little bit more time to make sure that the PD piece is in place and that they can blend, they can blend the learning as effectively as they would like to. So, but they know that this is coming. They've been part of the conversations. Celeste Best is on the technology committee, and she's been sharing with faculty. And recently, they completed a survey, and the majority of the, I would say, I can't exactly remember the number, but the high school faculty is definitely on board and very excited. They just feel that they need some time for PD.
And they've been keeping their fingers crossed for the middle school. That was the message I got this morning from the high school tech people, is we're keeping our fingers crossed for the middle school, that this works for them. So they're being very supportive.
Yes, very.
Okay, thanks. Thinking about the money part of it, when I look at these kind of dollars in a lease situation, I think this is the same as a full-time position.
Yep.
So when we enter a lease agreement, it's essentially saying we're going to be doing this on an ongoing basis. So this is more important than another teacher, at least in our short-term needs.
Yep, and I would agree with that right now. I think we have the teaching staff we need. I think that this wouldn't result in us not getting a teacher. It just results in us beginning to provide the technology needs our students deserve.
Okay. And then my last one, just thinking about how that impacts the budget. Is there a possibility that it would give us some additional flexibility if we were able to cover that first-year lease payment before the end of the current fiscal year?
I would say that Sue Caswell would kill me if I said yes, because she's, she and I just talked about the budget today. And even though, you know, she's very comfortable with the report she gave tonight, she's really fixated on closing up this year based on the numbers she's provided. I don't think she would be comfortable if I said, yeah, let's get it out of this year's budget, because she would, she doesn't feel that great about spending additional money at this point. She's kind of projecting the balances and trying to make sure that we have the money, for example, that we committed to the towns for carry forward and have a little bit of money for our emergency fund. So, I mean, again, you know, we tend to be more conservative in terms of how we're spending money, so that we can end the year in the black. And I think if we went and tried to produce $84,000, it would be a stretch for us to do that and meet our obligation that we made to the towns.
Brad?
Is there an option if a parent wants to opt out of having a device? Because we did have a couple, I think, in some of those schools you were in.
And that option existed in Maine as well. Brian, you know, there are parents who don't want their children to have device. I would say that in the system I ran in both Portland and Oakland, Portland was about 7,500 kids, and Oakland was about 3,500 kids. I would count on one hand, you know, the number of parents.
That was a small amount in here.
Very, very tiny, yeah. Most.
But I just want them to have that option, because some parents will.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, absolutely. I think that's important, in which case they would, you know, use the machines in the library under Nick's supervision or Nico's supervision. So they don't necessarily get denied access, they just don't have to take a laptop if, you know, they're uncomfortable.
So how do you feel? Ready to move to vote on this? So I wonder if somebody would make a motion to enter into a, I'm trying to think the wording of the motion, a four-year plan to adopt a one-to-one self, see how it would be.
I'll try it.
Okay.
I'd like to motion for the district to enter a, an agreement for four-year lease for one-to-one lap devices for the middle school.
Okay, good.
How's that sound?
Good. Moved by Brian. Seconded by Dan. Do we have additional questions?
Can we put a not-to-exceed-dollar amount on that?
I think we're good with that. You can, you can.
Is, are we comfortable with this as a?
Yeah.
An upper end, $85,000 for the first year?
Okay. Maybe as proposed, you know, as presented by.
As presented in the, by the committee.
Is that okay? Okay. Ready to vote? All's in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the studio have in favor?
Wow, thank you, guys. That was wonderful. Nice job. See, all those good wishes from the high school paid off.
Yeah. Thank you for your hard work.
And your hard work.
And you got a few work ahead of you. I would look forward to hearing how it goes, yeah.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah. Yeah, good result. Okay, we take a five-minute break? Here, Al?
Yes.
Okay. Can we assemble?
I just wanted to ask, do you want to just think?
Yeah, I was like, it was good.
In connection to the laptop initiative, on the, as a discussion item, we have a rough draft of the cellphone policy, not a first read. Since we've done so much work with technology tonight, I'm wondering if, how people would feel if we moved to the next meeting and had it as first read, and the next meeting would give us a chance to discuss it, given what we've done tonight in terms of the initiative with the one-to-one? How would people feel about that? Because we do have it done in public tonight, we have some other relatively brief business, I think. Would that, how would people feel about that?
Okay. I guess, so I do have a couple of questions that we can either do now, or I don't know about how these fit together.
But could we do that in the next meeting?
Well, they're kind of, it's around the, how the high school fits into this and how these policies interact with each other. So if it affects the structure, I don't know if.
I would like to hear the questions anyway, Michael, so if you don't mind, Tom, just so I can.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
If I, so if I can.
Does that be okay? Bring up the question.
If that's okay.
Sure, sure, go ahead, go ahead.
So there was, there was, in our folder tonight, there's a J I C J, which adds the high school cellphone slash personal technology device to the title. And then there's the J I C J A. What's the difference? When I, I think when we talked about this last time, it was J I C J was going away and being replaced by the new one. Now, that looks like we're marking it up, so what's the?
Sure, thanks. Thank you, Michael. So actually, I did this as a result of a query from a community member, where I had sent these out, and he registered some confusion. And so I wanted to differentiate, when I said this was going away, it was going away for the middle school and the elementary, not for the high school, because the high school policy had been reviewed a year before. And so I recognized the confusion was that I was putting both of them out with the same title. And so I needed to differentiate the title, so we could say, okay, we're talking K through eight cell phones, we're talking nine through 12 cell phones. And if you look through the R document, you can see there's a significant difference in terms of misbehavior. At the middle school level, it's more take the device away. At the high school level, it could lead up to and include expulsion. Why is there a distinction? Because Suzanne deals with issues that can become far more serious at the high school level. So I wanted to make a distinction between the high school and the K through eight policy that we've been talking about. The parents, you know, have been very, very focused in on K through eight. Occasionally, it would trip into the high school, but we would back away from the high school, recognizing we reviewed the high school policy a year before. So that's why there's a, I tried to make a clear distinction. So that's why the A exists.
Okay. So the proposal would be that both the new proposed and the existing marked up would all exist together?
Concurrently, yeah. One more to cover the high school.
That's all I want to do.
And one more to cover the middle school.
Okay. So we'll have that on the agenda for next meeting as a first read. Okay. Master schedule draft, you have a draft of that?
Okay, so in trying to be respectful of previous conversations related to the board's agenda, the first one was raised by Kenny a couple of school years ago in relation to having board, board meetings on a significant Jewish holiday. And so my recommendation was to go off Wednesdays in September, although since then, I've had a conversation with Denise, and she may have come up with a different solution, which is just as viable. And then the other time that Wednesdays didn't work was this year's during November and the Thanksgiving break, and going off Wednesdays again. And so that's the, that's the significant change between.